Call the meeting to order. Any need of motion to approve the agenda?
President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, May 14, 2020. If there's no modification, we're changed.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. First and foremost, I want to commend the department heads and elected officials for following your order for non-essential spending. The activity has been very, very reasonable as you can tell from your purchase order log, which typically at this time of the, towards the end of the fiscal year, would be a lot fuller than it is. So everyone is doing what they absolutely have to do to get us through these difficult economic times. On page seven at the very top, I do want to point out there is an expenditure for your approval for fence repairs due to wind damage that we sustained at 802M at Roush Drive. That was done during one of the windstorms that we had in March. We submitted the claim of course to the risk would have fell under our deductible, which we knew it would, but we wanted to open the claim just in case there were, there was more than just this claim for the wind damage, but that's the only damage that was sustained. So we did have long fencing come in and repair the fence to the northwest portion of the 802 compound. You'll see that throughout the purchase order, many of the outside agencies are getting their fourth quarter allocation drawdowns in, so we're working on that so that in early June, I can give you a better idea of what your unencumbered fund balance will be for next fiscal year. Also, on page 12, the first full item, which is our BP Fuel Fleet card, you'll see that our Fuel Fleet payment for the period 412 through 511 was actually down $4,506 from the previous billing period. So that's actually a reduction of almost 30%. That's due of course to the reduction in fuel costs, but the sheriff's department has also seen a reduction in the number of calls compared to last year at this time of about 21.2%.
What about other agencies? Any assessor involved? They driving as many miles?
I can't speak for the assessor, but our engineering and permits department is just as busy as they typically would be. The other, the only other thing would be page 15, the first full item indicated there are Lawrence and family movers. We did successfully move the facilities department from 520 South Raleigh Street to 750 Baltimore Street. Just a commercial moving company. Tracy got quotes and they were the low quote.
Oh, they're marked worth.
They worked three 12-hour days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, not this week, but the previous week. And other than some materials, we were over there last Friday at 520 South Raleigh Street for a pre-bid conference, other than a little bit of junk metal that will be taken to recycling and a little bit of equipment that we intend to sell at surplus auction, that building is now completely empty. And you'll be receiving the bids next week on the retrofitting renovations to 520.
You've got financing bid out now, right?
It's right here today.
Financing of that? We have two bid openings today, the roof replacement and/or repairs to 510 and also the financing package.
All right. Anybody have any questions on the purchase order? All right. I'm moving on to internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. The council has three internal budget revision requests for your consideration. All are for Department 420 facilities and all three are requested to correct deficit balances. In all three requests, Mr. Lang is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 459 capital outlay equipment. The first request is reduce capital outlay equipment by $672. Current unencumbered fund balance is $13,098.45 with 56.72% spent to date. An increased line to 26 professional services by $672. That line item currently has a deficit balance of $671.25. The next request again is to reduce capital outlay by $243. An increased line 345 uniforms by $243. That line item currently has a deficit balance of $242.39. And then the final request again is to reduce capital outlay equipment by $1,243. An increased line 341 supplies and materials by $1,243. That account currently has a deficit balance of $1,242.64.
Any questions on that?
We have a change of status. We have received change of status from Mary Cacking, Director Number One, for the following employees effective May 16, 2020. April Hedrick to be promoted to telecommunicator two. Salary increase from $38,400 to $39,735. Carla White promoted to senior operator. Salary increase from $40,095 to $43,005. Ashley Jones, a step increase salary from $51,300 to $52,316. Sabrina Hess, a step increase, salary increase from $48,926 to $49,895. Chrissy Sandogel, increased salary from $39,795 to $40,989. Morgan West, a step increase from salary, salary from $40,295 to $41,489. Change, while we're talking about central dispatch, it does seem like we do have some employees there that's been there for quite a while and seeing them still progressing into the next step with the step salaries that we put in place. So that seems like it's working pretty good. We still lewd having some turnover, but moving on to change of status received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for the following deputies effective over in February 1st, 2020. Adam Boothby promoted to corporal. Salary increase from $52,557 to $55,146. Austin Ennis promoted to corporal. Salary increase from $44,755 to $49,505. Letter resignation received from County Clerk's Office from Kimberly Yurich effective May 7, 2020. And removed from payroll Carl Morgan, sailor, effective May 11, 2020. Questions on change of status? Moving on to approval minutes. Everyone, excuse me. Everyone was present on April 30, 2020. Any changes or corrections to those? Moving on to the county council calendar. We'll be here in the chambers on next Thursday, the 21st, for a normal meeting. We celebrate Memorial Day on Monday, the 25th. We also have boards and commissions. We have fire board tonight. We'll be here in the chamber with a minimal amount of board members present. And next Monday, we'll have 4:00 PM Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, 4:00 PM Health Board, Burke County County Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, the 19th, 9:00 AM WRNR Councilperson Vice President Delia will be on. 11:30 AM Parks and Rec, 5:00 PM Sura District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District. Wednesday, the 20th, 1:30 PM ATPMPO meeting, Markburg Airport. I guess it's 6:00?
Okay.
Airport Authority.
Yeah.
At 1:30, all right. 6:00 PM Waste Management. The Solid Waste Authority will be at 6:00 PM. All right. Any changes on boards and commissions?
I, for the radio thing for WRNR, it's changed to Monday.
Is that right?
Yeah. They're having their Tuesday, or is it Tuesday? What was it on? Tuesday. They're having the candidate forum on Tuesday.
Are they?
Yeah. So they wanted to change it to Monday.
I thought they were going to do a debate.
I think they did one. Didn't they just have one just this morning with two of the sheriff candidates?
An actual debate is, I always like to debate better than a forum.
Yeah, they were fun.
Yeah.
Depends on the moderator.
They're challenging, you know? Yeah, sure. You've got to have a neutral moderator, but don't take a Rob Day who said that they were going to actually have a debate just as a forum.
Oh, I'd much rather do that.
Me too.
Yeah.
Keeps you thinking, that's for sure. You don't have no, you can't write no speech in a debate.
Well, you aren't giving the questions ahead of time.
Yeah, in the forum, you can't really do one neither because it changes as once somebody says something, it keeps changing your opinion of how you want to phrase your statements. But enough about elections. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone?
Motion of debate. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. First and foremost, I want to commend the department heads and elected officials for following your order for non-essential spending. The activity has been very, very reasonable as you can tell from your purchase order log, which typically at this time of the, towards the end of the fiscal year, would be a lot fuller than it is. So everyone is doing what they absolutely have to do to get us through these difficult economic times. On page seven at the very top, I do want to point out there is an expenditure for your approval for fence repairs due to wind damage that we sustained at 802M at Roush Drive. That was done during one of the windstorms that we had in March. We submitted the claim of course to the risk would have fell under our deductible, which we knew it would, but we wanted to open the claim just in case there were, there was more than just this claim for the wind damage, but that's the only damage that was sustained. So we did have long fencing come in and repair the fence to the northwest portion of the 802 compound. You'll see that throughout the purchase order, many of the outside agencies are getting their fourth quarter allocation drawdowns in, so we're working on that so that in early June, I can give you a better idea of what your unencumbered fund balance will be for next fiscal year. Also, on page 12, the first full item, which is our BP Fuel Fleet card, you'll see that our Fuel Fleet payment for the period 412 through 511 was actually down $4,506 from the previous billing period. So that's actually a reduction of almost 30%. That's due of course to the reduction in fuel costs, but the sheriff's department has also seen a reduction in the number of their, of calls compared to last year at this time of about 21.2%.
What about other agencies? Any assessor involved? They driving as many miles?
I can't speak for the assessor, but our engineering and permits department is just as busy as they typically would be. The other, the only other thing would be page 15, the first full item indicated there are Lawrence and family movers. We did successfully move the facilities department from 520 South Raleigh Street to 750 Baltimore Street.
These are large companies.
Just a commercial moving company. Tracy got quotes and they were the low quote.
Oh, they're marked worth.
They worked three 12-hour days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, not this week, but the previous week. And other than some materials, we were over there last Friday at 520 South Raleigh Street for a pre-bid conference, other than a little bit of junk metal that will be taken to recycling and a little bit of equipment that we intend to sell at surplus auction, that building is now completely empty. And you'll be receiving the bids next week on the retrofitting renovations to 520.
You've got financing bid out now, right?
It's right here today.
Financing of that? We have two bid openings today, the roof replacement and/or repairs to 510 and also the financing package.
All right. Anybody have any questions on the purchase order? All right. I'm moving on to internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. The council has three internal budget revision requests for your consideration. All are for Department 420 facilities and all three are requested to correct deficit balances. In all three requests, Mr. Lang is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 459 capital outlay equipment. The first request is reduce capital outlay equipment by $672. Current unencumbered fund balance is $13,098.45 with 56.72% spent to date. An increased line to 26 professional services by $672. That line item currently has a deficit balance of $671.25. The next request again is to reduce capital outlay by $243. An increased line 345 uniforms by $243. That line item currently has a deficit balance of $242.39. And then the final request again is to reduce capital outlay equipment by $1,243. An increased line 341 supplies and materials by $1,243. That account currently has a deficit balance of $1,242.64.
Any questions on that?
We have a change of status. We have received change of status from Mary Cacking, Director Number One, for the following employees effective May 16, 2020. April Hedrick to be promoted to telecommunicator two. Salary increase from $38,400 to $39,735. Carla White promoted to senior operator. Salary increase from $40,095 to $43,005. Ashley Jones, a step increase salary from $51,300 to $52,316. Sabrina Hess, a step increase, salary increase from $48,926 to $49,895. Chrissy Sandogel, increased salary from $39,795 to $40,089. Morgan West, a step increase from salary, salary from $40,295 to $41,489. Change, while we're talking about Central Dispatch, it does seem like we do have some employees there that's been there for quite a while and seeing them still progressing into the next step with the step salaries that we put in place. So that seems like it's working pretty good. We still lewd having some turnover, but moving on to change of status received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for the following deputies effective over in February 1st, 2020. Adam Boothby promoted to corporal. Salary increase from $52,557 to $55,146. Austin Enis promoted to corporal. Salary increase from $44,755 to $49,505. Letter of resignation received from County Clerk's Office from Kimberly Yurich effective May 7, 2020. And removed from payroll Carl Morgan, sailor, effective May 11, 2020. Questions on change of status? Moving on to approval minutes. Everyone, excuse me. Everyone was present on April 30, 2020. Any changes or corrections to those? Moving on to the county council calendar. We'll be here in the chambers on next Thursday, the 21st, for a normal meeting. We celebrate Memorial Day on Monday, the 25th. We also have boards and commissions. We have fire board tonight. We'll be here in the chamber with a minimal amount of board members present. And next Monday, we'll have 4:00 PM Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, 4:00 PM Health Board, Burke County County Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, the 19th, 9:00 AM WRNR Councilperson Vice President Delia will be on. 11:30 AM Parks and Rec, 5:00 PM Sura District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District. Wednesday, the 20th, 1:30 PM ATPMPO meeting, Markburg Airport. It's, I guess it's 6:00?
Okay.
Airport Authority.
Yeah.
At 1:30, all right. 6:00 PM Waste Management. The Solid Waste Authority will be at 6:00 PM. All right. Any changes on boards and commissions?
I, for the radio thing for WRNR, it's changed to Monday.
Is that right?
Yeah. They're having their Tuesday, or is it Tuesday? What was it on? Tuesday. They're having the candidate forum on Tuesday.
Are they?
Yeah. So they wanted to change it to Monday.
I thought they were going to do a debate.
I think they did one. Didn't they just have one just this morning with two of the sheriff candidates?
An actual debate is, I always like to debate better than a forum.
Yeah, they were fun.
Yeah.
Depends on the moderator.
They're challenging, you know? Yeah, sure. You've got to have a neutral moderator, but I don't think a Rob Day said that they were going to actually have a debate just as a forum.
Oh, I'd much rather do that.
Me too.
Yeah.
So keeps you thinking, that's for sure. You don't have no, you can't write no speech in a debate.
No, no.
Well, you aren't giving the questions ahead of time.
Yeah, in the forum, you can't really do one neither because it changes as once somebody says something, it keeps changing your opinion of how you want to phrase your statements. But enough about elections. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone?
Motion of debate. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Huss.
Good morning. I have today six honorations we had to correct last week and all for the reasons that's listed there. All six of them come up to $725.3.
Need a motion on the six personal tax exoneration due to officer.
President, I want your 66th personal property exoneration in a amount of $725.3.
Motion been made. And second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We also have, uh, boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight, we'll be here in the chamber, chamber with a, uh, minimum amount of board members present. And, um, next Monday, we'll have four P M. Eastern panel, transit authority, four P M. House Board, Burke County, planning commission at six P M. Tuesday, the nineteenth, nine A M. W R and R Councilperson Vice President Delia will be on. Eleven thirty A M. Parks and Rec, five P M. Suror District, six P M. Stormwater District. Wednesday, the twentieth, one thirty P M., uh, H E P M P O meeting, Martinburg Airport, it's, I guess it's six o'clock?
Okay.
Airport Authority. Ah, okay. At one thirty, all right. Six P M., six P M. Waste Management, uh, the Solid Waste Authority will be at six P M. off. All right, any changes on boards and commissions?
I, uh, for the radio thing for W R and R has changed to Monday.
Is that right?
Yeah, they, they're having their, uh, Tuesday, or is it Tuesday, what was it on, Tuesday? It, it, they're having the candidate forum on Tuesday. Yeah, so they, they wanted to change it to Monday.
I thought they were going to do a debate.
I think they did one, didn't they, didn't they just have one just this morning, uh, with, uh, two of the sheriff candidates?
An actual debate is, I always like to debate better than a forum.
Yeah, they were fun.
Yeah.
Depends on the moderator.
They're challenging, you know, yeah, sure, you gotta have a neutral moderator, but, um, don't think of Rob, Dave said that they were going to actually have debate just as a forum.
Oh, I'd much rather do that.
Me too.
Yeah.
So keeps you thinking, that's for sure. You don't have no, you can't write no speech in a debate.
No, no.
Well, you aren't giving the questions ahead of time.
Yeah, in the forum, you can't really do one neither, because it changes, uh, as once somebody says something, it keeps changing your opinion of how you want to phrase your statements. But enough about elections, I need a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
Some of.
Much of the debate second, any discussion, if not all, favors they have. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Huss.
Good morning. I have today six tolerations we had to correct last week and, uh, all for the reasons that's listed there. All six of them come up to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and three cents.
Need a motion on the six personal tax exoneration due to officer.
President, I want your sixty-sixth personal, personal property exoneration in a amount of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and three cents.
Motion been made and second, any discussion, if not all, favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Forwardly reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I want to thank the esteemed governor of the great state of West Virginia for permitting me to get a haircut.
I second that.
Yeah, Tim's hit pretty bad. Then I had a, uh, Burke County Public Service Water District meeting Monday. They approved the design plans for Eagle Run Apartments, which are ninety-two rental townhomes, somewhere in Eagle School Road. I mean, this construction industry is moving right along. There's not a water district meeting, they're not approving ninety or a hundred or two hundred.
Lot of availability and things like that.
How much is the, how much is the, I haven't done one lately, how much is, uh, it costs to get a, uh, water, uh, access?
Of course, they have the, uh, SIF.
That's right.
Twelve or seven hundred?
And, uh, they approved the budget for next year.
How's the, uh, Little Beaver Springs, I think that's the name of down Hooker Hill?
Um, it's, uh, it's, it's come back down, so it's operating, yeah. But they're still, they gotta have the place.
Yeah, are they talking, I mean, they had a, a preliminary number going after it.
Well, then, everything stopped. Searching for water source and whatnot.
Okay.
So, because the companies from Massachusetts and New Jersey or something, insane. Everything stopped.
Yeah.
Didn't they test one time that subdivision out off Little Miller Road to, and found an enormous aquifer?
Yeah, they've got wells out there.
Yeah.
And that's part of the separation. Old Water Harbor.
They work for the mountain, mountain program.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Anywhere down.
Comes right out of the top of the ground.
Uh, just push it right out.
Vault runs through there.
That mom's heavy. Pushing the water right out of the ground.
Step on a spider.
That's right, just squeeze it right out.
All right, Ms. Walton?
Uh, most of my, all my meetings were virtual, uh, most of the, like the farmland, uh, the transfer tax for April was a hundred and fifty-four, which is down faster this time, about eighty thousand. Um, the farmland has continued to move forward on organizational, so they finally got a comprehensive plan booklet that's got everything as far as the rules and regulations of how things, uh, are to work with. The up-to-date, all the up-to-date rules and regulations, of course, the farmland, uh, allocations and stuff has always changed, I think every five years, uh, funding source to be. We hope to close, uh, I don't know, three, three or four, uh, farms that are involved with, uh, a couple of them involved with back grave, back grave. Oh, yes, and, uh, good part is we're the only one eligible that own the state, so if it's funded next year, we'll be putting in some more, we can get some. We had several that applied, we only took, got several other farms around.
That's because of the pristine waters that are back.
Yeah, because it's the only clean, it's the only clean water we've got, um, it's absolutely wonderful.
Yeah.
No, it's wonderful. So that was a, a good conversation. Brownhouse didn't have a regular meeting, but we're doing work with a debt line on the construction side over there with different things. Got enough paperwork that he needs, um, then I'm also working with the Merritt Court project for next year and we're doing interviews this week. So there's, and last but not least, I contacted fifty-five counties regarding funding, and I'll talk to that later, about Parks and Rec, the State Parks, State Forests and all this. I've got this board, forty to fifty-five, I got responses because, um, some of them aren't opening right now and, and the folks that are there. Right, and, and I'll be honest with you, I felt sorry for the county clerks because the ones that nobody was there, that the county clerk was there. And I said, I guess you got stuck with it, she said voter's registration, we're filling out, filling out applications for absentee, for all the, sending out absentee ballot ballots and stuff. And she said, it's taking us forever because staff is down and I'm by myself handwriting, a lot of these folks were by themselves handwriting the addresses, so I probably felt, felt sorry for them. So I'll give that report later. Uh, however, in conversations with, with the, um, different people, I talked to commissioners, one of which was questioning, and this is something, Mr. Bentley, we want to, I want to see what, they wanted to know if we could audit, uh, hotel motels, or how do you police them to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to, how do you close them, and that kind of stuff. And I said, I remember we've done some of that, but I would get with Mr. Bentley.
Talking about, we're talking, we actually just hired a position to do that for next fiscal year through Gary Wine's office.
Okay, well, as I said, this, this one county and the other county, uh, was interested in, uh, the one cent sales tax and was asking that they were spending twenty thousand, they spent twenty thousand last two years on the legislative session for lobbyists with the one cent sales tax. And the, the thing was, if you can give us any help at all, we'd appreciate it, so that was the conversation this week.
If all the county and the county commission association supports the one cent sales tax, it's just that, can't get the legislators to do it.
Right, but that's.
Unfortunately.
Need good lobbyists.
Or more than one.
Or more than one.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Delia, you're next.
Um, I, I'd like to point something out, she, she touched on the, um, the, the voter ballots that were being sent out. Uh, I've had calls and concerns about voter ballots, people, um, getting the absentee ballots for nonpartisan and did not understand that when you do that, a nonpartisan, you don't get anybody that's a Democrat or a Republican on your ballot. And, uh, that was a, that was a concern of some people and you have to, you have to choose and, and I think, if I remember correctly, I, I had a explanation of that a few years ago when that was an issue as well. And the explanation was that the primaries are designed for the, the party to move their person forward. So you have to choose to be a party, not, which, which kind of, one would think that the, the thought process would be for the nonpartisan to be able to vote on, uh, a Democrat or a Republican, um, to help move them. But you still have to choose one side or the other and you can't pick from both, so, um, just wanted to point that out, just so that, uh, um, it's clarified a little bit for people that, uh, are asking for those absentee ballots.
Right.
This is the general election.
Right. Right, and that's all, exactly, yeah. Yeah, and that's all they get on it, is, is that, if they choose a party, they get that plus whatever's on that, uh, that party. So, um, I did have a, uh, airport authority meeting, uh, we're moving, uh, steadily forward with, uh, trying to, uh, secure everything and planning, um, for, uh, purchase of F P, F P O, a fixed base operator out there. Talking about all kinds of, uh, possibilities and brainstorming on, on, uh, what and, and how to make things profitable as soon as possible. The, uh, um, the development authority meeting, um, it, it's, it's a, uh, it's, it's different getting used to the, uh, um, to Zoom meetings. The, the development authority is actually having Zoom daily meetings among staff because they're still working from home and alternating one person in the office all the time, um, so that they, yeah, one person is there, operating the office and the rest of them, but, but, uh, to have a regularly scheduled daily Zoom meeting for office, I guess, is a little different, but, uh, I think it's, from my understanding, it's working well. Um, we have, uh, we did enter into a L O I with, uh, a project maple, um, which is, uh, it's going to, has the possibility to bring, uh, a lot of good paying jobs to Burke County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wicker.
Good meetings.
Um, anything I have to report on, I didn't have any more meetings. Hang out on the phone, Dave was with the health department yesterday, Dr. E and stuff. Basically, I think we all agreed and, uh, they, Helen agreed to ask the government to have a frequent, uh, hot spot visit. To have signed that paperwork already. The treaty is going to, um, look upon to sign his, for us to send it down to his office. He also made contact with the hospital and they will be starting their surgical procedures back up on Monday. And not at full capacity actually, but sixty to seventy-five. And they also will be able to test for the virus in a matter of, I think, two hours. I believe how it would be is if you schedule for surgery, a surgical procedure, you'll be actually tested for the virus. And before you go into surgery, you'll have the test results back and the work you can proceed. Sure, in a two-hour timeframe or whatever it is, you'll be asked to drop the card. But anyway, that's the couple of conversations I was in, the most, many others, but that's the two that I want to bring up to speed on.
I think that's one of the things that I've heard was, uh, um, was, uh, indication about, um, higher numbers of people having, um, positive, uh, that, that they're positive for the virus, but zero side, or zero side effects at all, or, or not, don't even know it because that testing has been done, um, other places for a few weeks now and they've seen that these, some of these patients are tested positive, have zero signs before they go into the operating room, and so they have to remove.
And I'm thinking, you know, one of the studies was done in New York, um, they tested a lot of people just randomly. Found that there's more people that have the virus than, like you said, don't have any symptoms and, you know, wouldn't just like any other, anything else.
Another thing to add, did you, did, did they, do we have a, did we have a finalization, uh, maybe Tim knows, I don't know, but, uh, on where that testing's going to be? For the, uh.
That's going to start?
For the, the testing that they're going to do this weekend.
All right, we got a bit of news, we got to get to, um, grab the, first one is the construction loan for five twenty South Raleigh Street, Mr. Davis. R F P was put out.
The first bid opening of the day, um, we have requested proposals for a three-point-eight million dollar construction renovation loan for the new day report center located at five twenty South Raleigh Street. Um, we have requested an eighteen-month construction loan, monthly interest only, payments during the course of the construction, uh, principal amount to be converted to a twenty-year fixed rate loan upon completion of the project. Um, we did direct mail, uh, the R F P to ten financial institutions. Uh, it was placed on the website and social media platform. It was advertised in the Martinsburg Journal on Monday, April the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. You do have certification publication on file in your packet. Um, as a result of a number of, uh, meetings and telephone conversations, we did issue two addendums um, that all of the, uh, financial institutions, uh, tutions had acknowledged. Uh, proposals were due no later than four o'clock P M. on Wednesday, May the thirteenth. And we did receive six proposals, um, prior to the deadline. Because the proposals, um, there, there's not a cover sheet, we asked for a, a whole laundry list of things that we wanted to provide. I'm not sure it'll be easy to, um, read the interest rate proposed into record, so probably best you can do is just read who've re, we've received proposals from into the public record.
You know, for construction to confirm too, right?
Yes, sir.
I told you it's just listed as construction, is it construction two firm?
Yes.
First United Bank and Trust. Basically. Say, head to the Boulevard, Martinburg, West Virginia.
I don't know, because we didn't have a cover sheet, so just asking, opposing what we said in the past, just read the bid into the record and then come back the next week with the table of results.
Uh, First United Bank is from open letter. Do you have an option, Mr. Davis, to pay semi-annually or monthly?
No, sir, we did not request that.
Just on semi-annual payment?
Well, it depends, um.
Monthly is a lot cheaper to pay down.
The loan that we have through M V B Bank, we make monthly. All the other payments that we make are semi-annually.
All right, the next one is coming in from Summit, uh, T E Bank, um, they have one branch here in Martinburg, but I believe their corporate headquarters is in the border.
United, um, First United Bank is proposing a tax exempt rate of two-point-eight-zero percent fixed with a hundred percent collateral for the three-point-eight million.
Is that for eighteen months though?
Yes, sir, that's for eighteen months.
So that's a, one on fifty percent collateral, one on a hundred percent.
Yeah, three-point-two percent, eighteen months for fifty percent collateral, two-point-eight percent for eighteen months with a hundred percent collateral.
Oh, it doesn't refer to any firm?
It does not.
I was asking a question. It looks like Summit Bank is going to do that, if you'd like, I can try to do it, you can confirm. Summit Bank is going, looks like it's paid three-point-six-five percent fixed, trust to confirm. Your nation being half, one percent. Origination fee a half, one percent. Twenty-year, um, and payment, that's an added monthly payment, that's maybe a quick out thousand, I think. Three, United Bank. Has an office here in Martinsburg, is United, okay, uh. All right, United. Another thing too, someone's asking for collateral, someone's asking for fifty percent. So, all that to the fact.
Yes, sir, and what we typically do is we'll do this, we'll do a spreadsheet. Now, this is an RFT.
Oh, is it?
All right, so, this one, um. Is a rate of two point five percent, that's for monthly throughout construction. And fixed, should be. To the construction year, and fixed rate for five years at the start of the situation, followed by five years. Based on twenty years.
I thought the last time we did one of these, it was an RFQ that we did to be able to look at.
Even there, you know, it's your RFQ. So that's United, and, kind of all I can tell you is here in Martinsburg branch, one of them, I saw that one. All right, the next one is Bank of Charlestown, in Charlestown, West Virginia. Okay, bank, yeah. All right, Bank Qualified Tax Exempt, two point nine seven percent fixed, um, act equivalent of three point eight one percent. Origination fee of five thousand dollars, eighteen months construction, all period, eighteen months interest, underneath, followed by a two hundred forty months principal interest payments based on. And the loan the value is two percent. All right, next one, CMB Bank out of. Berkeley Springs, West Virginia. Loan the value not to exceed eighty-five percent. Term of loan will be up to two hundred fifty-eight months, twenty-one point five years, so they're going twenty-year plus to eighteen months. Uh, interest rate two point nine seven percent fixed for the term of the loan. Origination fee. The prepayment penalty will be waived. CMB Bank out of Berkeley Springs, West Virginia. Bid number six, Cruisin' Associates. It would be a principal amount of three million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, which we had done in bonds, eighteen months interest only, followed by a twenty-year arm. I, I'm sorry, I'm in. Amortization, um. It'd be a fixed rate. Average coupon is three percent, net interest cost is two point eight three six percent, true interest cost of two point seven nine six percent. Cruisin' Associates, one, does all the work. That'll be over, I have to place our bids of six, right, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right, the next bid opening is gonna be five ten South Riley Street, roof replacement.
Yes, sir, um, your next, your next bid opening is for labor materials needed for the replacement of approximately thirty-six thousand square feet roofing at five ten South Raleigh Street. Um, the original RFP, um, actually requested that they remove the existing roofing or roll roofing down to the underlying roof deck, uh, and dispose of that, inspect the, the existing roof deck, uh, repair and replace any defective roof decking, it was estimated to be about thirty-two square feet. Install twenty-year. Yeah. Uh, install twenty-year rubber roofing, uh, minimum of six mil with a thirty-year rubber roofing. Um, optional, um. Install the necessary walk pads, uh, minimum of three feet to the rooftop HVAC units. Uh, install walk pads around the perimeter of the rooftop units. Um, install, uh, foot pads at the bottom and top of the upper ladder access. Install any water and ice, uh, ice and water shield as needed, install new boots, et cetera. Um, however, over the past three weeks, uh, Jack, who, Jack Lang, who are facility structures in the back, uh, we've had about fourteen separate roofing contractors, um, that have spent a considerable amount of time on the roof, um, with Jack, inspecting the roof, taking the measurements. Uh, many of the roofing professionals state that, um, gave us the same information that we got when we, when we did the construction back in two thousand fourteen, that the roof really doesn't need replaced, that there are better options to complete roof replacement. Um, so we did issue addendum number one on April twenty-third, twenty twenty, which allows qualified roofing contractors to offer alternatives to complete roof replacement. I fear we might as well look at all of the, um, uh, options available to us. It is. Uh, the original RFP had three addendums, uh, addendum number one, which I said, uh, as I indicate, was issued April twenty-third, which allowed the roofers the opportunity to submit alternatives to, uh, complete roof replacement. Uh, addendum number two, uh, answered general questions regarding the scope of work and procurement process. And then on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, we issued addendum number three at the request of, uh, the Fire Board and Council President Copenhagen, um, which allowed us to solicit, solicit separate roofing bids for the new roofing member, for a new roofing membrane needed uh, for South Berkeley Volunteer Fire Department. That was actually issued as a separate bid, uh, received as a separate bid, and we did receive six bids for South Berkeley VFD, which is in a separate folder over in your suite, which will be provided to the Fire Board. Um, the RFP was direct mailed to eight roofing contractors, it was placed on the website and social media platforms. Uh, advertised in the Martinsburg Journal on Saturday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, you do have certification of publication in your packet and we have it on file. Uh, because of social distancing requirements, we did not have our mandatory pre-bid conference, but we did encourage interested contractors to contact Mr. Lang, uh, to inspect the roof and take the necessary measurements. Uh, as I mentioned, over a three-week period, Mr. Lang, um, spent time with about fourteen separate roofing contractors on the roof. Uh, we did have one company that actually flew a drone, um, with infrared capabilities, um, over the building to identify any potential hotspots. Uh, bids were due no later than four o'clock PM on Wednesday, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty, which was yesterday, and we did receive six bids prior to the deadline.
All right, the first one is Shield Roofing and Construction LLC out of South Porter High. Doesn't look like they've done a, a bid on, um, anything other than replacement at that, I can see. Twenty-year warranty for replacement is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, thirty-year warranty at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Wood decking, five dollars per lineral foot, metal decking, uh, could be moved and replaced as eight dollars and fifty cents a square foot. This is Shield Roofing.
Um, just as a point of reference, Shield Roofing did the work on senior services and, and did an exceptional job for us, they've done very good work for us in the past.
Next one. Is Parroted Roofing Inc., uh, out of, uh, the Mid-Atlantic Parkway, Martinsburg, West Virginia. A twenty-year warranty, a hundred and eighty thousand, three seventy, one eighty-three seventy. A thirty-year warranty, two hundred and six thousand, five oh five. And they say there's a market that bid, has been provided, so. It says also time and material price to replace roofing and if damage is more extensive, it's eight dollars per, per foot. It does have an alternate bid with recommendations that they're talking about here, that's pretty extensive.
What I intend to do is collect all the bids, we'll put together a spreadsheet, the building committee will look them over and then we'll bring a recommendation back to the council.
All right, next one is Blackstone Roofing LLC, um, Airport Road, Rochester, Virginia. They give a price, um, for a twenty-year warranty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Does not have a price for the thirty-year warranty. Prices for any sheet, sheeting replacement. Three hundred dollars per square foot, then they put twenty by three, sixty square feet beside. Uh, that, that they're stating that there's, that three hundred dollars per sheet would be sixty square feet. That's five dollars per, per foot. All right, the next one is Vertex Roofing Contractors out of Nassas, Virginia. All right, they got a twenty-year roof at three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two thirty-six point eight four. A thirty-year warranty is three hundred and eighty-three thousand, thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. It looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, it says a roof coating of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents. And it also says roof over, adding second layer, three hundred and eighteen thousand, one twenty-three ninety-five.
I was interested in that one.
Relax Roofing and Waterproofing is the next one, out of Nassas, Virginia. Is a twenty-year EPDM, is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine fifty, one eighty-seven, nine fifty. Uh, alternate number one, a white PPO, for one seven, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. A thirty-year EPDM is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And then alternate for a thirty-year PPO is one seventy-seven, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour plus material cost to, for any decade. The next one is Havel Roofing, out of Heggers Town, Maryland. Um, twenty-year warranty is two hundred and one thousand, six eight, six seventy-eight, two hundred and one thousand, six seventy-eight. A thirty-year warranty with both of these are tariffs, is two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven oh three. To recover a twenty-year is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars. And coating for twenty years is two twenty-one, two oh one. Off on the watch down that road. That was left. All right, that concludes our bid openings. Is that right, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next on our agenda is Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller, Chief Deputy Scott Wilson, bid recommendation equipment installation, spotlights, prisoner cargo barriers for 14 2018 police interceptors. I'm sorry? Anybody want to do any activity on board? I'm sorry, give me a second. Board, uh?
Take care of the sheriff.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning, how you doing? All right, so bid recommendation for the equipment installation, spotlights, and prisoner cargo barriers.
Right.
Okay, so, and this is with the company from Morgantown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Have you all done business with them before?
Yes, sir, we have.
Okay. Bid requirements met?
Yes, sir, we have been.
All right, so, it looks like the sheriff is looking for the approval to move forward with the spotlights and prisoner cargo barriers for 14 2018 police interceptors. And please bear with me a little bit. Is this coming out of your gun fund or is this coming out of your regular account or where?
Gun fund.
Gun fund, okay. All right, need a motion to approve?
Chamo.
Motion made, have a second. Second, any discussion?
The only discussion I have is what's the amount, son? Or just, just the one recommendation? Take care. Two amounts, one for the. That was a three. That was a top. So that takes care of both the spotlights and the cargo.
Yes, sir. All right, so to have a second. Very good, sir. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion in this mark? If not, if not, all fair say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Black Roberts being reappointed to the Solid West Authority for a four-year term. Did you say Mr.?
What says here?
All right, well, I already know that Tracy's right.
You don't, you're telling on Tracy.
All right, I guess we're scared for break. Any other board questions? All right, take a break. Look at there, chip off the wooden block.
Hit it too hard there, Doug. No, I didn't mean to push. I couldn't get the thing to bring up the amount.
All right. Uh. We're back in session. Uh, we have to go back and revisit the roof bids. There was one other bid that came in.
I apologize. There when Tracy was going through the bid package, there was actually one additional bid, which was a thin one, um, that we thought was part of a bigger packet that had been rubber-banded together. So there were actually seven bids. Um, there is another bid from M and N Contractors, um, that was received. It is properly, uh, time and date stamped. It was received prior to the deadline.
I'm gonna get my knife, Bill. Hmm? I told you we got your money, my knife getting done.
Uh-huh. Looks like you still have to get a new knife before long. Looks like you sharpened that one a couple times.
It looks good, huh?
Yeah. All right, um.
So it cuts three ways.
Basically, it looks like, uh, this, this bid is from Eminx Construction, uh, here in, um, Berkeley County. Do, um, looks like complete tear-off, three hundred ninety-eight thousand nine thirty-four fifty-one. And it looks like he got a check mark between, besides twenty-year warranty. Uh, he's got John Manville NBL warranty. Um, cover over existing, uh, roof. It says room, uh, it's been approved, um, one hundred eighty-eight thousand eight ninety-five. And it is that they are subcontracting to Smart. Um, you got a bid for a hundred forty-five thousand four hundred dollars, twenty-year warranty, GAAP TCM coating. That's another coating. Um, and that's pretty much the completion of this bid.
I apologize. That was my error.
None of the other ones gave a bid price up, tear-toe, tear-off, replacement. Did they all have over? Did all the other ones over that?
No. Some, most of them were tear-off. And it's just a couple had over. All right, um, Mr. Bennett, you're up next, uh, Washington Trails East, uh, Lexon Civil Action Settlement, sir.
Lexon, as I told you earlier, proposed a settlement to us. We're sued against them. Uh, the bond proceeds, there's a balance of six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars on. They have offered us two hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighteen dollars and forty cents. Uh, we have two, uh, bids. I talked to both, uh, bidders, uh, and they're ready to go, and they're satisfied that their bids are, uh, can do what needs to be done. Our engineering department is also satisfied that, uh, those bids can do what needs to be done. So I recommend to you that we accept the settlement of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighteen dollars and forty cents. That, that we will put that in an ex- estro account. The contract will be with the homeowners association, which agreed to, to sign the contract documents, and, uh, our engineers will inspect the, the job, if it will prove it or not.
Is there still more in commission?
I'm sorry?
Still more in management or streets or something like?
It's mostly streets, uh, paving. Uh, there is some remediation of a couple sinkholes.
Are they protecting them or covering them over?
Paving's down right now.
The pa- the paving, they're, they're doing, uh...
I don't know, I need a cost.
Uh, another base coat and...
We're going to wear course.
And, and, right.
No, I was referring to...
So I, I recommend to you...
Cost of purchase, yes.
I recommend to you that you, that we settle this, uh, suit for the amount offered, uh, and that the president, uh, be authorized to sign the settlement agreement and release.
Motion made second. Any discussion? If not, long far say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
In addition to that document, there is a development completion agreement between the council and the HOA, uh, Washington Trails, uh, and, uh, it just lays out what the different responsibilities are. Um, and I ask that you authorize the president to sign on that, to have the, the counsel.
I'll authorize the president to sign the settlement agreement with the homeowners association.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, long far say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Moving on to Mr. Davis, um, the continuation of the conversation of the, of the employee health insurance renewal fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one. If you would, Mr. Davis, I'd like to start out, start this out by saying, Mr. Davis and Penny and I have had some discussions over the health insurance, and the one thing that we wanted to make sure of, which Mr. Davis and Penny was sure of, um, that we take the best route for the boys. And, um, it seems like, um, there's, it's a double-edged sword to me, Mr. Davis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's got to be very elegant of, uh, the, the, the bad thing is, we have, our exposure rate is not favorable for us. Um, so therefore, if we look at trying to keep the benefits the same...
All right. We're back in session. We have to go back and revisit the roof bids. There was one other bid that came in.
I apologize. There when Tracy was going through the bid package, there was actually one additional bid, which was a thin one, that we thought was part of a bigger packet that had been rubber-banded together. So there were actually seven bids. There is another bid from M and N Contractors that was received. It is properly timed and date stamped. It was received prior to the deadline.
I told you we got so many my knife getting done.
Looks like it's gonna have to get a new knife before long. Looks like he sharpened that one a couple times.
It looks good.
Yeah. All right.
So it cuts three ways.
Basically, it looks like this bid is from M and X Construction here in Berkeley County. It looks like complete tear-off, 398,934.51. And it looks like he got a check mark between beside 20-year warranty. He's got John Mandville NBL warranty. Cover over existing roof. It says room, roof, 188,895. And it is that they are subcontracting to Smart. You got a bid for 145,400 dollars, 20-year warranty, GAF TCM coating. That's another coating. And that's pretty much the completion of this bid.
I apologize. That was my error.
None of the other ones gave a bid price up. Tear-toe, tear-off, replacement. Did they all have over? Did all the other ones over that?
No. Some, most of them were tear-off. It's just a couple had. All right. Mr. Bennett, you're up next. Washington Trails East, Lexon Civil Action Settlement, sir.
Lexon, as I told you earlier, proposed a settlement to us. We're sued against them. The bond proceeds was a balance of 633,000 dollars on. They have offered us 228,018.40. We have two bids. I talked to both bidders and they're ready to go. And they're satisfied that their bids can do what needs to be done. Our engineering department is also satisfied that those bids can do what needs to be done. So I recommend to you that we accept a settlement of 228,018.40. We will put that in an estro account. The contract will be with the homeowners association, which agreed to sign the contract documents. And our engineers will inspect the job, if approved or not.
Is there more than management?
I'm sorry?
More than management or streets?
It's mostly streets, paving. There is some remediation of a couple of sinkholes.
Are they protecting them or covering them over?
Paving's down right now.
The paving... They're doing another base coat and...
It's going to wear course.
And, right. So I recommend to you... I recommend to you that you, that we settle this suit for the amount offered and that the president be authorized to sign the settlement agreement and release.
Motion being made second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
In addition to that document, there is a development completion agreement between the council and the HOA of Washington Trails. And it just lays out what the different responsibilities are. And I ask that you authorize the president to sign on that behalf of the council.
I'll try as the president to sign the settlement agreement with the homeowners association.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Moving on to Mr. Davis. Continuation of the conversation of the employee health insurance renewal fiscal year 2021. If you would, Mr. Davis, I'd like to start this out by saying, Mr. Davis and Penny and I have had some discussions over the health insurance. And the one thing that we wanted to make sure of, which Mr. Davis and Penny was sure of, that we take the best route for the boys. And it seems like it's a double-edged sword to me. Mr. Davis, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But it's got to be very elegant of the... The bad thing is we have, our exposure rate is not favorable for us. So therefore, if we look at trying to keep the benefits the same, then it drastically increases the contribution from employees for spouse and family. So, you know, after looking into it further and discussing with Mr. Davis and Penny, I think their recommendation would be the best one to try to not only be fair to our employees, but also make sure that it doesn't jump the spouse and family at 17 to 20 something percent.
It would go 17.52% for the fully insured, the super blue plus 2010, and 22.34% on the HSA.
If we kept everything...
If we kept everything, we're the same. We have, we continue to check. We got a recent update on our claims experience. It has not improved. If anything else, it's gotten a little worse, if that's possible. Originally, in addition to the renewals, we had asked for seven, six different options to look at all the various options that were available to us. Since our discussion last week, we actually asked for one additional option. After looking at all the options, meeting with Penny and I've spent some time together, have talked to some employees that have the various plans. And going back to Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, asked them if they could eke out any, kind of anything more for us because of our continued claims deterioration. If we were going to renew today, it would probably even be higher than what was originally proposed. So having said all that, we still feel that the recommendation that we originally made last week, which is listed as your option two in today's read ahead, is still the best way to go, not only for the coming plan year, but also to allow us to control our costs for subsequent years. It does increase the out-of-pocket expenses. It still provides 100% coverage for many, many of the basic benefits. It does change the out-of-network copay from 80-60 to 80-50. And it does substantially increase some of the prescription drug costs. If you'll recall, prescription drug cost of the total claims paid for the policy period under review of the claims of 1,989,285 dollars, 40% of that was paid out just for prescription drugs. And we do not anticipate that is going to change. So we do recommend the original, we stand by our original recommendation. If adopted, we would also ask that the council increase the per-employee allocation from 8,148 dollars annually to 8,300 dollars annually.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing that... Again, Mr. Davis has been doing this for a long time. And Penny has been working along with Mr. Davis on this. And as you heard Mr. Davis say last week, it's been one of the toughest negotiations incurred a lot of time.
Yes, sir. It would be from July 1st to June 30th.
Right. So it's going into our fiscal year. So I want to thank you, Penny, for all the time it took to do that. Any other statements or questions? If not, enter a motion.
I'm making a motion that we accept option two for insurance and increase the contribution of Berkeley County. I'm asking the council.
All right. Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And we will be meeting with employees over the next six weeks to answer any questions that go into detail. And Penny and I have talked about how we intend to roll it out. It'll be a little different this year, but we'll, like everything else, will adapt.
All right. And I thought there was a second part to this on the fiscal year versus the calendar year.
That was all part of the second option.
Okay.
And I assume that also includes the renewal group term life, which was all part of the second option also, because there were no additional costs. And that 8,300 will take care of that full package. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we can notice this out on that.
Yes, sir. We will do that. The second matter for your discussion, this is follow-up to requests that the council had several weeks ago regarding the increase, the future increase in our real estate transfer tax. As the council is aware, House Bill 2967 was passed this last legislative period that will allow Berkeley County to incrementally retain more of the real estate transfer tax revenue that's generated in Berkeley County. The new law takes effect June 5th, 2020. However, and I have included West Virginia Code 11-22-2 and highlighted that section of the code that has been changed. We will not see any of the additional revenue until July 1st of 2020, July 1st of 2021. The law allows Berkeley County and all other counties that generates transfer tax to retain incrementally more of the tax, 10% a year for the next 10 years. Again, as I stated, beginning July 1st, 2020. As you can see, the law does not restrict the county's use of the funding. So the council had requested that it be placed on your agenda for discussion purposes so that for the next year, we can develop some guidelines on how you wish to allocate that additional real estate transfer tax, if you so choose.
And how much have we got? Well, here's the thing. Everyone has to be aware. When we were, before the recession, we were slightly under where we are today. Right? During the recession, at the bottom curve of the recession, we had less than 100 new acres. Last year, we had 1,146 plus or minus. So... It's, this is a... This revenue is very much tied in with building construction and the economy. No different than the hotel motel tax. Different, but clearly in the same way. So you got to think, you may, the county's portion of this may be currently about 1.2 billion. Because even currently, right now, last year, I should say last year, peaked above where it was before the recession hit. If we're at 1.2 million dollars correct today, and we go from 1,146 zones to less than 100, we would probably be less than 300,000 dollars. And that's the thing that we're trying to explain is we can't go into a contract to purchase land on something that would be unstable from our revenue point. So it's got to be real careful.
It's 1.4 right now.
1.4. That's our portion.
That's the farmland protection, your section. That would be 140,000 would be our 10%.
Right. It's a third, a third, a third. So that's, that's farmland's third. So we get an equal third of that. And the state gets an equal third.
Then you also get 55.
Right. The bad news is it doesn't take effect until July 1st of 2021. The good news is by July 1st of 2021, we'll have a real good indication of what the current pandemic is going to have on the economy. What, you know, and I've been thinking about this. One of the things that you may want to consider is next year, based on the housing market and the construction market, is determine, project what the additional, we think the additional 10% is going to generate, and actually set up a separate revenue, separate fund for that money and move the, what we calculate to be the additional 10% every month over into this special fund. And it would be, you can earmark it for special projects. You know, maybe by then, with meetings with the Parks and Rec Department or some other departments, we'll have a long-term strategic plan in place for our Parks and Recreation System, which is one of the things that this council has indicated you'd like to have. You'd have, you could start setting aside some funding to implement that plan. You could use some of that additional money. You know, we have 32 acres down Sportsman's Paradise. You know, we could start using some of that money for some public restrooms down there, you know, moving towards a park in North County. So just some of my thoughts.
Well, have it separated. Move by that.
And I think...
Yes, sir.
And I think to where the law allows. I think it's important over the next year that we got to figure out, you know, how we want to do it. And I did talk to John Party about it. I told you about that. There was a set, I don't know, allocate anybody on this thought process. We just wanted to get the word back.
Well, you had to get it through the legislature.
Sure.
It's a primary concern. We understand that.
Yep. We understand completely.
I think there's plenty of time, another 14 months, to decide how to allocate it. And I think it gives a great opportunity to be able to get with the Parks and Recs and get on a plan and figure out. And maybe, you know, maybe in the months to come, the plan with them isn't the same as it is right now once you sit down and work, you know, work through the numbers and the vision moving forward.
Well, you know, I've been on this quest for years, probably many, many years. Paperwork in front of you shows, I have actual numbers from 38 of the 55 counties. And funding that is, at this current time, is going to Parks and Rec. And the range is everywhere from 60 to 27 cents to 75, 77 a citizen in their county. Currently, we're a very little amount. And, but on the other side, I've got State Park, Wildlife Management Area and State Forest. You can go through there by counting and you can see over 30 of the 55 counties have some major parks or wildlife management areas that's been made available. And a lot of this, when you start going back and talking to the different counties, BNR has been very active. And of course, we started on the boat ramp and haven't gotten anywhere with that. And a number of issues with funding that comes to these different counties. And the average in the state, the 38 counties that I've got numbers from, comes up to $8.50. So we're way below that. And that's not counting Hotel Motel. Because that's not how the actual budget's from the different counties.
How many of those counties have a levy or a bond?
Well, the levy, we got one, two, three, four. And if you count Berkeley County and the school system, that would be five. Six.
I'm talking about for Parks and Rec.
There's five that have Parks and Rec listed. And Berkeley County is under the school, is under six.
What do you mean under the school?
In the school levy, there is money listed in the bond, I mean, in the levy for Parks and Rec.
Right.
And others are classified as quality of life issues and that kind of thing. A lot of, several of them are libraries and Parks and Rec. So there's different ones.
But they just did away with, well, I said just a few years ago, did away with a large amount that was going to the public library, didn't they?
Yes. So what they did is change the percentage on the levy. So we have, altogether, there's somewhere a levy in the state. There are six counties that have something listed. And out of that, of course, that money, the levy plus the budget is included in what I put numbers I have played here in front of you. I will have this completed here, I hope, in the next week or so, when everybody starts coming back to work, because I was running into a lot of folks with pandemic that weren't available. The State Park information, Wildlife Management Area and State Forest is up to date. The only thing that's not included is there's a brand-new, supposed to be a national park going in Elk River. It's the State Park that's being upgraded to a national park. It's supposed to be open in July. But, you know, I think we should come up with a separate fund. That's beautiful. But I think we ought to do a lot of discussion also. But the money, as I explained earlier, the land and water money is 100% paid for. So we say 50%. The most they can pay on any project is 50%. And our matching funds is 50. So that's money that we don't have to repay. And my issue is, at this particular point, I think we ought to come up with, if we don't do anything more than letter of support that we're interested in it, not that we're going to put X dollars in it and we'll have no more later, but, you know, not to make a commitment as to, we're not going to pay those kinds of money that people want for property. But letter of support is just minor compared to where we're going. And I think we ought to have a committee that works diligently to work with BNR, also the tourism and all this other stuff. And as I found out with Bridgeport, they're building, their one-cent sales tax is building a 45-million-dollar sports complex in Bridgeport.
And we can't talk about the one-cent sales tax because we don't have that.
We don't have that.
And they can't get it for some reason.
Well, we can't get it. And in conversation with the few commissioners I actually talked to, they're very anxious trying to get funding for the one-cent sales tax. And they said, can't you do anything with your representatives in Berkeley County? I said, you think you've got problems? You ought to be here. Can't get any help there either. So there's a lot of things on the table. And I think it's a situation that we need to grab the bull by the horns and look forward because we've got to do something here. Our population, the density, I didn't even do the density by square miles, which is part of the issue that I will have completed. That's one of our issues. And Pinawa County, the only county that has the 10 acres per thousand, they have 2,800 acres. Over half of it's developed, the other half isn't. So that's where I am on these numbers.
I'd be curious to know whether or not the other half will be 2,800. Whether it's able.
Or is it deeded into the county commission's name? Or is it, you got to think, we have 23,000 acres. It's State Forest in Berkeley County that's involved.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in the count. That 2,800 is not, that's totally separate from, because the State Parks and stuff is all listed separately. 2,800 is not included for that. No. And it's property, I think you probably can put a walking trail on, but that's about all because it's just... all, because it's just trees and wood.
And strings.
Yeah. But I think due to the fact our density's going up, and the demands and issues, it will also help if we get more space too with the MS4, with the park area as far as bringing things out. Just, I think we ought to do something, I don't know exactly what, but I think we ought to do something. Nothing more than a letter support.
Well, I think the letter support comes with a, a obligation, Mr. Van Leeuwen, if you, I read it the same way that I think you read it, that letter support comes with an obligation to repay not only what they, their portion of it is, but also any other expenditures at a, at a much higher rate than what we just got quotes from on RFP. So, the problem about it is, when, when it gets to the point where we are able to purchase property, it's going to cost us less money if we do our own finance package than it is to use conservation district. You just seen the quotes that we got was less than 3%. And, and I think there's all conservation, there's 4.75%.
4.75, 5%.
Right, so it doesn't make sense. And at this time, when we're, I, I think it, I think it's wonderful for us to, to develop a plan, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate that, but at the same time, as I told Mr. Catton, this is a, you couldn't have hit a worse time.
Right.
There's so many unpredictabilities going on right now with this COVID-19, that we don't know what's going to happen.
Well, what'd be a great thing, if the naming rights, some corporation, in fund?
Absolutely, yeah, but.
That'd be the answer.
But when we turn back around and we're, not going to spend much of time on it, I, I've explored it, I think we got a good plan. The problem, the problem also is, you, you're spending money before you get, you know, and you can't do that, especially when it's tied in with growth.
Well, you don't need a motion or.
No, no, I think Ms., Ms. Moth has pleaded her case.
Oh, yeah.
Of trying to get something started now. Me personally, I think, I've, I'm, you know, Mr. Davis, they had talked about, we don't exceed any, we don't want to see our first 10% of that money for another 14 months. So, for us to turn back around, when we ask all of our elected officials and department heads, hey, no unnecessary spending's going to be denied. We can't, I'm sorry, I, I won't do it. So.
Well, we've already made that motion, that we're not doing that now, but I think that, I, I think it's a very good thing to put together a plan and try to, try to come up with a, come up with a long-term plan, and maybe it's a 10-year plan, and that, you know, once, once you put a plan in place and get a plan and, and have the whole vision of what they want to do, I, I talked to one of the members today, and, and they said that, that there is some type of plan somewhere. And if it's an older plan, then, then it should be updated and, and try to, you know, I think it should be a great thing to have more park area. I think quality of life is a big issue we need to work on in Berkeley County. I think at, just about every, every board, every board that I sit on, we discuss quality of life with almost every deal that we put together. And so I think, you know, I think to do that just makes sense right now, but I think you also, you also have to have that in place in order to dedicate, we're, we're talking a minute ago about how much of this transfer tax to spend on it. If you have that, you have a picture of how much it's going to cost over the next 10 years, how much money they're going to need. You can do some estimates on what you think the economy's going to do, that type of thing, and, and try to use some of that funds to get you there. As well as other sources, that we had a brief discussion about other things that are possible to do to create, or, or fund, like Alan said, I think all of them are great ideas, just need to, need to see the plan, how to do.
Well, there's got to be a plan as to what you want, but there's also got to be a plan on how you're going to get, when it comes to the fact you've got to source, funding source with the, with the transfer fee, but I don't think that anybody's really explored the corporation issue with them wanting up to get a name on a particular piece of property and go from there.
Well, I think the first step is a plan.
You got to have that.
You get the plan, then you, then you work on the funding source, and, and I think, I think the funding source is a doable thing to put something together, I think everybody's concerned about it, but just want to know what you, what you got to, what you got to allocate, you know? What it's going to give the, what it's going to give the people the challenge.
The other thing is under economic development, once we get more projects like this going, it's going to help that department too. Businesses looking quality.
Absolutely.
You could call it corporate green space.
Yeah.
No, I think you had a really good idea last time, you know, I think there's, I think there's definitely ways to make it happen.
All right. Okay, um, next on our agenda is, so Mr. Davis will start working on that. Next on our agenda is discussion of the COVID-19. Bill Kearns is in the audience, Bill, we have Tim Ziya here. Are you going to be able to stick around a little bit after you get done or not?
I'm trying.
Okay, because I think Tim's got some serious concerns, unless you want him, you go first, Bill, I just want you to make sure you.
I have a 12 o'clock left.
Okay.
I got your voicemail, I've reached out to Dr. Reedy, because I guess he wants to see it, but I think he's in line with the thing, but he's going to reach out, right?
So, my, my update from the public health area this week is, as we are continuing to look at reopening of our, our state and their county, we're still seeing numbers increasing identified positives from time when I spoke with you all last week till last night's numbers, we, we went up over 20, about 25 cases since last week. We, we still can see those, but people are getting tested more, so we, we know those numbers are going to still come in. We are, right now, we've had 6 fatalities that are listed as COVID-related. Still that, while they're horrible, that we have 6, it's still considerably low for a county our size, I feel.
What about the VA center? That's not considered a COVID.
The VA center, and that's a, that's a question I get all the time about those numbers, why is, are those numbers included in ours, or why are they not? The, the long and short of that is, those numbers are included in Berkeley County's numbers if that person that's at the VA is a Berkeley County resident of origin, originating Berkeley County resident. Most of the, a lot of those are not, because they come from different states, different counties, so if someone passes away and has a COVID-related death, it goes to the county that that person resides in before they come to the VA, so.
Excuse me, can you say that one more time? So the, so the, so the, so the test results, that test positive, if they're at the VA, and they test positive here in Berkeley County, and they're from Virginia, then that test, that number doesn't come here?
No, sir.
That would go to?
Virginia, or wherever they, their residence was prior to coming to our VA center. We, we're looking, May 21st, as you've seen from the governor's guidance, looking at restaurants opening up at 50% capacity. Now, I did receive confirmation late last night, finally. My question I've been asking all along, is this going to be in relation to 2 people per thousand square foot, or is it going to be 50% of capacity, such as what they have on their bill, their permit with the Health Department, how many people they can see? I did receive confirmation last night, it is based on seating that the permanent allows, so the, the two, yes, the 2 people per thousand square foot is exempt in restaurants for indoor dining that's opening up. So I think that's, that's a big plus.
When is that?
In May 21st.
Next week, next Thursday.
So, that's in the governor's guidance. Now, there are things that, in the guidance that restaurants will need to adhere to, such as having their tables and space allows that 6-foot social distancing between other tables.
Well, it's actually 6 feet from the back of chair to back of chair.
Yes, yeah, from the people sitting, so keep that 6-foot, sir?
How many at a table?
I don't know if it stipulates how many at a table, if it's in your household family, I'm not sure it stipulates in that guidance about that. There are a number of different areas about increased sanitization, there are also guidance for the waitstaff and, and employees wearing face masks or coverings. A lot of good guidance there, but what we didn't have was, are they exempt from the emergency rule? So I asked that point-blankly yesterday evening, and I did get a response back that yes, they are exempt from that emergency rule.
You've been after that for a while, haven't you?
I have. It's hard to get.
Well, it doesn't make any sense if you don't have that. So it can't work if you don't have, if either the, either they have to be exempt from the emergency rule, or the emergency rule has to go away, or it doesn't work.
I, I think, my personal opinion is, and I probably shouldn't put that out there, but my personal opinion is this, this emergency rule has served its purpose, the same as our hotspot designation has served its purpose, but it's time to look at the current situation in trying to reopen our county and our state back up. So I think these things that were put in place initially, when we were really seeing a heavy onset of newly identified positive cases, I think we need to relook at that. And that's what I'm asking for. So when you're looking at reopening larger specialty stores, are we looking at, still at 2 people per thousand square foot? As we look at opening our offices up, are we still looking at those 2 people per thousand square foot? As we look at opening our churches up, are we still looking at that 2 people per thousand square foot? And I just got, spent a little while ago with Mr. Hedges at Brown Funeral Home, same issues coming up, how they do, how they going to do funerals? I said, well, they were saying they're exempt from the rule, are they exempt from the emergency rule? I don't think so. Same as question I'm getting from churches. Some churches are abiding, they're holding off on doing their services, and some are not, and some have a good number of people in.
So how do you treat this? When you, when you go to somebody and they say, well, I assumed it was this way, this is what it was, and now we're doing this?
I educate them on what guidance I have, but I can't tell them opinions, they don't want to hear my opinions, they want to see it in black and white, and I don't, I don't blame them.
Well, first of all, I'll continue to say that you, the Director of the Health Department, or Dr. Reedy, or this council have not had, or anybody in this whole, I shouldn't say anybody and everybody, everybody's been affected, has done everything that they tried to do the fairest and most equitable way. And I say that even to the individuals in the county, that hasn't, that has been very willing to do what needed to be done. So my hat goes off to you and Dr. Reedy and your staff, it goes off out to the county council, goes out to our public safety employees, and everyone. It doesn't stop there. It goes out to each individual that has practiced 6-feet social distancing, because that's what it, what it really boils down to.
Yes, yes.
You know, it is being able to stay away from each other at a reasonable distance of no less than 6 feet, so that it stops the spread or slowed down the spread. And I think that the county as a whole has done that tremendously well. I asked my, my go-to guy, one of my go-to guys today to run me a number, and it's amazing, and I can't tell you what the number is, because the number's too big for me to comprehend, but it's, so I told him to do me a spreadsheet, because we talked about, you know, every person that's infected infects 3 people to the point where they test positive. But it also could infect as many as 10 or more.
Which we looked at a magnifier of 10.
Right. So, in day 1, if I took, if we took 3 people being infected, and it's compounded, like we talked yesterday on the phone, by the day, the 23rd day, we'd be 94,000 people. That would test, that would be positive enough that, that should have been tested.
Mm-hmm.
Um, get back to that number that might be able to read, I mean, it gets into the billions.
Is this just for Berkeley County or State of West Virginia?
Well, he's just, he's just saying that, he's just saying if 3 people, if 1 person infects 3, then the 3 affect 9, you know, and, and compound it that way. And Dr. Reedy spoke about that, the, yesterday, a little bit about the compounding of it.
Just compounding. So if, if, if we, if, if the numbers are thrown out that was talked about, 3, 9, 27, 81, look how big the number is in day 60.
I, I expected you to know what that was.
I do, I'm sorry, I'm good at numbers.
What was it, Bill? I didn't look it.
It's high.
I think the whole world would be infected by now, just by 3 people.
Yes, yes.
So, that's what I was trying to get through yesterday, and I think we all are on the same page, I know we were, at the end of a conversation, that we've done a tremendous job. A, a really good job.
I think so, and, and that's why I, I did send a letter off to our, our State Commissioner of Public Health, Dr. Slim, asking her to, to, because there's some new guidance that's supposed to be coming out today, we don't know what it is at the local health level, it's not been passed down to us, it's not like it's embargoed, that I'm telling, not telling you what it is, I don't know what's coming out today. But what I do know is I've asked, I asked in a le- letter that I sent to her to remove Berkeley County's designation, because we have moved past this area, and now we're, we need to be looking at more so of trying our best to do social distancing and, and preaching that sermon to people that we already have, but I definitely think as we try to recover, we need to try to recover, and we can't do it while we still have a hotspot designation, not only for it being outdoor areas, which is where that does refer to majority-wise, but it also, as I found out this week, it refers to the court system, when you can actively have courts. If you, if we continue to keep that hotspot designation, it's going to affect that.
Well, and I think, I think it's fair for us, Bill, to all for the state on public record that if the governor releases us from a designated hotspot, and our residents don't practice what we've been preaching for the last 60 days of proper social distancing, this could very easily flare up again. If it does, there's nothing saying that we won't be designated as a hotspot again.
It, it's quite encouraging when you are going out, not everybody is doing it, but when you go out and you're seeing people stand in line, and they're wearing face masks, you go in a grocery store, you're seeing people, people in there, staff wearing face masks, and the people shopping are wearing face masks, that's encouraging to see. So we did not have that when we started this whole program with this pandemic, we did not have that in place, people have listened, they've increased the amount of people that are wearing them, because they want to be protected, and that's encouraging. Again, I think the hotspot designation has served its purpose, but it probably at the point now needs to be removed. I don't know about sporting events and things of that nature, and I talked with Mr. Catton a good bit as well, don't know how that's going to affect that, because when the governor starts talking about, well, we may bring back some sporting events with no contact, I don't know too many that don't have contact, unless you're playing tennis, golf, everything else is pretty got, much got, some kind of contact.
Depends on who you play golf with, they make it full contact.
True. But there's not much that don't have.
Mine would not be contact, because you'd never find the ball once I hit it.
It's kind of hard to play baseball, softball, without having some kind of contact, we're violating that 6-foot distance.
Right, you're not going to wipe the ball off your court, because it's the next player.
Exactly, it's kind of hard to have a family reunion in a park, in a pavilion, and keeping that 6-foot distance, it's just not possible. It's kind of hard to go swimming in a pool with not having that 6-foot distance.
I don't know, Bill, I can tell you my wife's been doing a pretty good job.
Well, I think it's.
Keeping her distance from you? Yeah.
Yeah, well, that happened before.
Well, I had to blame it on something.
She's, she's, she's probably the one that's teaching people how to do it. The, I think it's.
You invented social distancing.
Yeah, I think it's obvious that the only way that, the only way that we can work our way out of this is to actually give the responsibility back to the public to be able to do that, you know, we're, we're, you know, we need to work towards that point where the public has, has gotten the education of how to prevent this from spreading, and, and we have to see whether or not that public can actually do. And, and we have to see whether or not that public can actually do that, um, without all these regulations.
And, and the only, and they talked about it again yesterday and I actually had this conversation with one of your employees almost two months ago. The only way that life will actually be closer to being normal would be a cure and a vaccine.
Yes, sir.
That's the only, you know, we're not scared of the flu.
And, and people taking advantage of that vaccine when it becomes available. So we can get that immunity. We've had the same, history is repeating itself. So many of our diseases that we've had out there have been eradicated by vaccines that are made available to, to, for the cure for that.
I have a question for you. I gotta be careful. Um, when you take a vaccine for the flu, and my immune system is very good, at least I think it is, does the vaccine actually weaken your immune system?
No.
Sort of like, you know, if I don't use my brain, it kind of starts fading?
No, it doesn't.
Your immune system?
No, no, vaccines.
It actually gives you that?
Flu vaccine weans off after a period of time, which is why if you don't, it's not a one time you get it and it's good for the rest of your life. It weans off. You have to renew that each and every year. No, it does not weaken your immune system. It, it, it's created off the previous year's strains that are out there and then they keep some that are consistent like H1N1. But you have to have that booster to every year or give you that vaccine every year to get it, you through that period of time. But it's short term.
And the older we get, the more important it is.
It does, which is why we have like influenza vaccine, we have high dose for people that are a little older than others, um, that it's a little stronger and it doesn't wean off as fast and it gives you a better level of protection.
But there are some vaccines that they give that will cure you for life from getting that type.
There are certain vaccines that you, if you complete the series, it'll give you a level of protection, such as for hepatitis A, hepatitis B. There are still times, um, as, as, as you go further from receiving that vaccine, it may be a good thing to get a test done to see if you still have those antibodies in your body strong enough. Same thing with rabies. Um, it's a good measure to have those antibodies tested if you continue to have that exposure to make sure you're current or do you need to have that booster?
Any questions or concerns for Mr. Curran? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll stick around.
All right. Tim?
Good morning, sir.
I'm just here to talk to you briefly about the impact that COVID and the restrictions that have been put in place add on the, the day report center and, um, people who suffer from substance use disorder in general. Um, as far as the day report center is concerned, um, we stopped seeing people face to face with the exception of, um, drug screening. We reduced that even, but we stopped seeing people, uh, face to face as of April 6th. We went to, um, Zoom meetings and conference calls to maintain contact with these folks. And that's just problem after problem after problem. It's better than nothing.
It wasn't enough, though, right?
No, no. Um, drug addiction, uh, basic human needs, connection, relationship. Drug addiction erases that. Um, people that suffer from drug addiction, alcoholism, they, they, they tend to, um, isolate. Those relationships that they once had with their families, with their friends, um, become non-existent. And a huge part of recovery is reestablishing that basic human need and, and getting the brain to begin to fire again. Being with people, talking with people. You know, since, since we stopped providing treatment at the day report center, face-to-face treatment, AA meetings, NA meetings, CA meetings, uh, church, all these things stopped. So all these people that, um, were under our care, who were, uh, uh, being healed through that connection, um, that it doesn't work. Zoom, Zoom doesn't work for substance use treatment. It simply doesn't work. Um, we cannot accomplish our mission unless, um, th- these meetings begin to resume. Overdose numbers, just to give you a quick snapshot, um, here in Berkeley County, um, the months of December through February, those three months, um, uh, the numbers, county and city together, 129 overdoses, 11 deaths suspected to be a result of overdose, not to be confirmed. Those numbers can't be confirmed obviously until later, but those are suspected numbers. So 129 overdoses and 11 deaths between December and February, those three months. The months of March and April, two months, 147 overdose calls and 15 deaths. That's obviously very concerning. Um, there's been an increase in, in overdoses and deaths, not just in, in Berkeley County, uh, but really everywhere. We've had, uh, several meetings this week. I'm part of a, a task force that Laura Pardar with HIDA has, has created. There are, uh, seven or eight different people who represent different HIDA initiatives through Northern Virginia, Baltimore and DC area, um, who are having conversations and, and, um, putting together a, a, a list of recommendations that Tom Carr is going to be delivering to the Office of National Broken Control Policy to address this very issue. This population simply cannot be neglected. We need to balance their needs with taking the appropriate, uh, risks to prevent the spread of this, this virus. All of my staff, all of the participants that, that we've talked to, um, we don't have anyone that feels that we should not be having face-to-face treatment. This needs to resume as quickly as possible. If the day report center were, were to continue to, um, be required to adhere to these guidelines, you know our facility, it's not a lot, we don't have big massive rooms. We were to continue to have to adhere to these social distancing guidelines down the road, right now, we can only provide services to about 50% of our population. Our number has, has dropped by about 30 people since these restrictions have, have begun. Part of that, of course, has to do with the court system flows. When the courthouse does open, I anticipate we're going to get a flurry of new referrals. Well, we can't do anything with that. We were required to adhere to these guidelines. What I would like to.
So are you, are you suggesting that, that, uh, similar to the restaurants, that the day report center, since it is in the business of saving lives, uh, should be exempt from the rule like a restaurant?
100%. While taking all, all of the, um, uh, the proper precautions that we were able to take, disinfecting our surfaces regularly, offering masks to everyone who's interested, doing free screening with everyone before they come into the building. The virus is obviously real. But it seems to me that this population in particular, is it much greater risk not receiving services than they are the risk of, of the virus outside? That's my opinion now. I'm their doctor.
So, so what, what do we need to do to get that to happen, Bill? Is that possible?
Bill, uh, I don't know. I don't know the, uh, person considering. Well, I think, I think Cam somewhat, um, has stated sadly that, um, has been a conversation since the virus has had the restrictions on, on shutting down the county, state and the nation, um, that had been put out there that we're going to lose more people, uh, non-related to the virus from depression and drug addiction that we're, what we're going to lose from the virus. And just in your two months, you've lost 15 people. You know, and the virus has, has, according to Bill, has, has been six deaths. With most of them having underlying issues. And actually drug addiction is an underlying issue as well. But, um, so you've had almost three times the death rate. However, you know, we had 11 before that, but three months, so, um, less than four.
I think, I think there's been at least one, if not two deaths already in May.
Right.
From overdoses.
Yeah. And, and Brian Costello has been telling us that for the last two weeks is that transports on overdoses and of course the call volume on overdoses has drastically increased.
Give him a break.
So, um, and, um, we hear you, you know? And, um, we respect you, boys and all your participants. There are no, there are no death of anybody else.
Tim, do you have, um, pardon if I'm not knowing, I'm actually speaking. Do you have some medical professionals that are working with those counselors?
Oh.
No, 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 let them know.
Actually, I'm. Boy five.
So supervised by Dr. Hart. Uh, social terms are social. And clearly you could, um, operate with the guidance, adhering to guidelines for social distancing. By the way, that's a great. Right. And that's all our guidance has been shown, says six foot distance is important, if possible. I think we can get you any way that we can consider that the day report center a, a medical facility offering type of services, either those to find proof of people. I think we could, it gets, that is a professional thing.
I think I got another option in my head, too. Might be a good.
Any other questions for me?
No, I, I understand where you're coming from. As I said, I mean, I did, I've never dealt with too much of the alcohol or drugs, but I work for a lot of middle school kids. He did, I always told somebody if I wasn't there the next day to talk to those kids, they get lost. And or something indefinite happened to them. It's just what you're, you're saying here with issues. Anybody's in trouble may need that human personal contact.
Right.
I'll be calling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brian?
Soon as today's one.
I've seen that.
Yeah, I was like, I think Mrs. Malk will appreciate this. When you asked the question about the vaccination, I was like the little kid in the back of the room. I know the answer to that. I know the answer. I wanted to jump, so I'm going to answer it. See, it's good that my mom and him know why they paid for an education. But, uh, what happens in the few, on the flu vaccine is when you get the vaccine, you have things in your body called T cells. And they attack as part of your immune system. And when they attack the vac, or attack that vaccine, they keep a record of what they did to defeat it. So when they see it again in your system as an invader, it already knows what it did. So it defeats it quite quickly. So that's how the vaccine works from that perspective. That's what education does.
That's why my body does, does okay. My mind isn't okay.
You know, I, I had a, I had a friend of mine years ago, and I would not suggest this for anybody, but he would get poison ivy all over his arms. He'd get around it, poison everywhere. I mean, where they got blistered. I mean, it was nasty. And one Saturday he was drinking a little bit and somebody told him, if you eat a poison ivy leaf, you won't get that anymore. And so he ate a poison ivy leaf and he, I mean, immediately after and to this day, he could rub it on his arms and it doesn't even affect him.
I'm shocked, I'm shocked that his tongue and everything down his esophagus did get blistered.
He said the whole day after he did that, he thought his throat was going to swell up. He said it itched, his whole throat itched. He thought he was going to swell up and have to call somebody to come haul him to the hospital, but he said he woke up the next day and everything was gone.
I've heard somebody did that, too.
Yeah.
I definitely wouldn't recommend that.
No, 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 definitely not.
But anyway, uh, we, we've had a good few weeks with the EMS authority. Unfortunately, this was not one of them. We had, uh, three crews that were placed on a 14-day self-monitoring, two of which had low-level exposure to positive COVID-19 patients. And then one that just from a symptoms point of view, we weren't too sure. So we put them in, uh, this patient did die at the hospital. They were tested and the test had come back negative. But, uh, based on what we saw, we felt that might be a false negative. So we wanted them to go into that 12, 14-day self-monitoring protocol. Not quite the quarantine, but at least we're following up. You know, to, to date, we've had over 150 encounters with, uh, suspected or possible COVID patients that we're tracking and tracing. And luckily for us, they've been doing, our people have been doing the right thing. You've mentioned some of this talk with other healthcare providers. We continue to work with the county health department on issues, um, such as their core teams that work with overdoses as well as moving forward with these QRT teams. Uh, there were some questions on legality of HIPAA stuff. Um, we do maintain PWW, which is a US attorney in EMS law. Based on how we do it, they zoomed in on a meeting with the health department and others, and they were able to get their questions answered and additional things that they wanted to know to ensure them that HIPAA was not going to be an issue based on the current laws. And there was a lot of data shared. Tim's left already. I wanted to tell him about a program in the city of Houston called the Ethan Project that, uh, it's, you know, they're just doing so much using, um, Zoom and things like that. So maybe right now here, because it's very new to us, it isn't working. But maybe looking at that program or reaching out to those guys and saying, hey, what are you doing different? What ideas might you have? It might be something that they look at and we forwarded that information on to the health department.
One of the things, we've all been on some Zoom and video teleconferences and stuff in the recent months. And it, it's enough to get the job done, to do business, but at the same time to really dig down in the weeds to do the business deal, you gotta have that interconnectivity, uh, face-to-face because a lot of our business deals and things that we do are done by body language.
I agree. There's nothing like putting an eyeball on your patient. That's.
I see you looking at me all the time, Ryan.
Who, me? I try to, but.
He, he, he's just thinking, he's wondering whether they're going to have to.
He's trying to stay one step ahead of him.
Bring somebody in and haul you out of here or something.
No, it's not like that. Well, they say know your enemy, what is that, is it something like that? No, that's not it at all. You, uh, that's just something that I preach to young EMS professionals. There's no substitute for putting an eyeball on that patient. And you can't see what your heart doesn't understand. And that's, that's just something to talk about.
One of the things I hate the most is emails because I tend, somebody takes it the wrong way that it wasn't intended to be.
Sure.
So.
Can't, can't put an expression on an email.
No.
Yeah, you're, you're right. And, and I make that mistake myself. If I sent out an email and said, okay, before you guys order anything from these specific vendors, it needs to come through me first. Because what I'm trying to tell them is, hey, I'm monitoring the budget, but they think that I'm questioning their ability to do their job. And that's not it at all. So I've had to learn that, okay, I can't send these out. I gotta go face-to-face, talk with these people or get on the phone. So I totally understand. Moving on, we've heard some folks talk about economic impact. I'll tell you a little bit about the economic impact on us is earlier in this thing, we did see a reduction in calls and call volume. But what we're seeing now is our call volume is actually 20% higher than this time a year ago. But our transports. $40,000 impact to your budget of lost revenue, and that is a healthcare provider in our industry. One of the things that I'm very proud of is, when I took this job, we had three 24-hour ambulances and 12, or three 12-hour ambulances. Based on the need of the community, we've been able to grow to where now we have five 24-hour ambulances, and still there's two 12-hour ambulances, because they're needed. But that's a substantial hit, and we don't know how long that will continue. And we're one of the businesses that really haven't had that much of a change. We continue operations as normal. We haven't been laid off, we haven't had those things, so that's pretty significant to us to continue to monitor and watch.
Well, one of the things, you're going to be affected, Ryan, and we'll reach out to all the different agencies and stuff, that will be affected by your people being quarantined, and overtime effect.
Correct. That's, that was my next point there.
Yeah, I read that on the body language.
Did you, is that what it was? Okay, you're reading, reading too good.
So, so, and maybe you're going to hit this point, too, but where, where, where is the ambulance authority at load-wise? So, I mean, if, if we're talking about lightening the restrictions and those types of things, is, if you get twice as many calls as you have now, are you going to be able to handle it? If you get, you know, are you, you know, where are we at that part of this virus? I mean, and not just this virus, because I understand you're getting more overdose calls now than you have in a long time, right?
Correct. That's a fair question. One of the things that our, when we hold our meetings every two weeks with our medical director, one of the key things that he threw out to us is say, look, not every call you're going to now is COVID-19. So, you need to remember, chest pain is chest pain, overdose is overdose. These things are real, so you need to treat them accordingly, and don't get pigeonholed into what you're going to. But one of the things that my staff and I talked about is, we kind of felt like we missed a step in this process. We ramped up to it, we got to that plateau, and now we're coming out of the other side. What we didn't see was the amount of cases that we thought we would see. We didn't, we didn't go through the, you know, you're losing 50% of your workforce with an, you know, with a 50% increase in call volume. We haven't experienced that, so I guess it's like a war game. You plan it out the best that you can, you hope that you're ready for it, but you really adjust on the fly, is what you're doing. As you mentioned, the overtime. Even to date, we, we have what we call an optimal staffing and minimum staffing, is what we have. We have one unit that what'll do is if an EMT or somebody gets sick and they call out the next day, the EMT on that unit, on the extra unit, we'll call it the optimal staffing, will drop down so that you don't have that overtime cost. But that's just, you know, that's losing one person. You begin to lose two, a whole crew, or two crews, your free crews, that can become quite cumbersome. But I can't give you a definite answer, because we haven't been there yet, so I can only speculate on what kind of impact that would have. But just doing what we're doing with our optimum staffing, we've incurred just unplanned overtime, about $12,000 so far this year, an unplanned overtime, beginning March 21st through the end of April. So, we're hoping to recover that money by utilizing that towards our HHS stimulus that we looked at, so we'll believe we're okay there. Now, we're hoping that any federal funding that comes out would allow for that, because we don't know where all this is going to go, but it's just a matter of staying on top of it.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, just off the cuff, that you would be one of those agencies that would qualify for some of the CARES money coming from the state, which came from the federal government through us.
We did, we did get, you know, through the HHS stimulus, which is part of CARES, we were able to predict what we thought our revenue loss would be for that second round. We applied for it, but didn't receive anything as of yet. So, we're just continuing to track what we've got, because this will continue over into next budget year, because this money is to be utilized through December 31st of 2020. So, whatever we don't utilize out of that stimulus money, we should be able to carry over either as designated funds or-
Well, there's some things in the county that, is that, right now, Francis, our regional jail bill, our regional jail bill was tracking down. It's continuing a less than what it was last year, right? But when this is all over, it's going to come on that. You know, all these cases and hearings and stuff have been delayed. Our regional jail bill, when they're starting to come out after most of the courts open back up, I'm sure could, could pay a cut, right? So, it's not an expense that we're looking at today, but it's going to be an expense for next fiscal year, for sure.
Yeah.
You know, so, we got to be careful about, you know, I thought about that this morning, the money we're saving this year better go into account for next year.
Yeah. Well, I just have a couple more things. One, just want to remind everybody that next week is National EMS Week. No proclamations this year or anything, we really got so busy with what was going on, we didn't even think about it. But, you know, I've called local radio stations, I've heard about Teachers Month, and Nurses' Week, and Law Enforcement Week, and I said, hey, I just want to let you guys know, there's another one in here, these guys do, too, so I want to remind you guys of that. If you see these people on the street, punch them in the arm, say thank you, do something, you know. But you spoke earlier about yesterday's Zoom meeting, and when I went into, you notice I didn't say anything, because when I went into the meeting, I said, you know, a lot of times, we listen to respond, we don't really listen to understand. So, I wanted to take that perspective and kind of listen to understand everybody's point of view, and I kind of come to this conclusion, is that we're all fighting the same battle, but we're at different places on that battlefield and have different perspectives. You know, you can see a perspective of, I've got to say, I've got to fight the battle, but I've got to save everybody, and that's not feasibly possible. Then you have the piece of, you know, we got to fight it at all costs. But what I would have liked to see is that leadership step up and say, hey, I hear everybody's point of view, but ultimately, this is what we need to do, which I think you did, when you said, hey, we've got to open back up, we've got to give these guys something. They've, they've worked their asses off to do the right thing, there should be some reward on that. And I agree, we have to open up, because as you said earlier, one of the things of a military concept is a crawl, walk, run theory. We tried to crawl them through it. When it didn't work, we imposed regulatory guidance to walk them through it. The reality is, we have to trust them to themselves to do the right thing, because it's their health, it's their life. So, I agree, and the big key for me is, we just have to keep in mind, what are those acceptable losses? How far can we go down the road before we begin to pump the brakes a little bit? And that's something that I would have liked to have seen addressed in that meeting yesterday, is, yeah, we all got a different perspective, we're all in the same fight, but how far do we go, and who's going to make that call? So, I just want to say, I'm very appreciative of the support that we've received from all you guys, with this first started weeks ago, and we came to Councilman Covenhaver and said, hey, we're having a problem at this location, we need your help. Him, Alan, Norwood, these guys, Mr. DuYeh, they all stepped up to the table, all of you guys, and said, hey, let's get in the fight, let's do what we can do, and we really appreciate that. So, on behalf of my staff, I'll say thank you.
And we have to trust our, we have to trust the people around us, too. I mean, we have to trust you, because, and we do, we believe that if, if you believe that the brakes need to be hit a little bit, that you're going to give us a call immediately, you know? We believe that, you know-
We have that relationship, absolutely.
Yeah, we believe that that's what'll happen, and when we're not getting that, you know, we're not seeing that, then, then, you know, we feel what we have to do is push that, push the economy side and try to get us back to some type of normal life.
I agree.
The one good thing with all this, Brian, and we all agree upon this, is you're 100% correct. We all have a different angle of the view of what's going on, of what has happened and what could happen. But the one thing I'm very, very proud of in the last two months is, everybody worked at it as a team.
Sure.
And not only employees through the county and all their agencies, but also the community. And, you know, if there was a bronze plaque for, for 120,000 people, 120,000 people should get one. And, and as we said in that conversation, we went into this as a team two months ago, we're going to come out of it and finish it as a team. And I think that speaks volumes for everybody that's been involved.
Yeah. Well, I think what, and like I said, I'm not just saying this because you're county president, you know, the president, whatever, I think it was very important for people to hear that what our goals were, because I think it got lost somewhere along the way, is the goals became, as I said, let's save everybody. It's not realistic. The goal was, was to reduce the impact on our hospital and our healthcare system. So, somewhere along the way, that got lost, and I'm glad that it was brought back up, and people had to take the stop and say, whoa, this, that's true, that's what this was all about. So, the other things were kind of rolled into that, you know, helping people, preventing the spread, keeping folks alive, that was all part of it, but that was our goal, and that's what was established, so.
I'm going to take a stab at this, but if three people was infected on day one in Berkeley County-
Yeah.
And it's compounded by three every day, right?
Yep.
I'm going to take a guess and say it's 42 trillion, 42.391 trillion people would be infected today, about three people infected in 60 days. Yeah, so-
Maybe, maybe he thought you were, he said, president or whatever.
I heard him say that. I always said, titles don't mean a darn thing, he just proved it. That's why I like him so much, man, he says lots on his mind, so.
Tell me what we need to hear.
Yeah.
That's, that's it, you know, that's, that's my thing, is sometimes we all, I mean, we're all very emotional and passionate about the position we come from, and that's understandable. And I've, I've myself had to tell people, don't confuse my passion on something for anger, because that's not it. But at that time, I was dug in, fighting my position. Once you back away from it, you realize, you know what? I probably went a little too far, and you've had to make that phone call and say, hey, man, let's, let's get back together, let's readdress this, because I was fighting you from a passionate position, not an angry position. And I think you need that sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, it's an outlet, but it's-
I respect passion.
It's meaningful.
It's, it's means that you have the right person in the right position.
I hope so, so.
Thank you for a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I'll see you in a couple minutes.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Anybody else? All right. Mr. Barnhart?
Right, so, we said-
Time to go out and play.
September 1968, haven't had one since, haven't had one.
Must have been a good one.